Oh, because there are five.
We'll bring our February 10th work session to order. And we have just one item on the agenda, and that's the FY 2026 budget discussion. Chelsea is going to lead that.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a quick presentation tonight, and it is a smaller presentation of the work session presentation from a couple of weeks ago, just to talk about capital projects and equipment. I wanted to take some time to go back over that stuff because I've been talking to some of you, and I think there might be some confusion on what was in the budget and what was not. But the first thing that I want to prioritize this evening is answer any questions you may have on the budget. So let's start with questions so we make sure you have all your questions answered.
I'm sure we'll have them as you go along.
Okay. And I'm going to dive into the capital projects component of the budget. Just want to spend a little bit of time talking this through tonight. So I'm going to talk about the projects that are in the budget that you are all aware of because they were in the CIP. So the first one is the Third Street Corridor Study. This project will study the limits of Third Street from Bridge Road to East North Side Drive. We are going to start this project in May so that we can capture the school traffic, and then this project would be completed sometime this summer.
When was the last time we looked at Third Street traffic?
We did a traffic impact study at the intersection of Third and Broadway a few years ago, but we've never done a corridor study on Third Street. So it's a little bit bigger traffic impact study.
Okay. So it's not just stoplight. What's the term they use for warrants? It's the length of Third city limit to city limit?
It is Bridge Road to East North Side Drive.
Oh, it does say that in there.
Yeah, no, you're good. This was the council's top priority project in the CIP. So we'll get this one done and taken care of. Okay, so the next thing is the Central Iowa Water Works purchase assignment. Just a reminder, as part of our 28E agreement, we do have a purchase assignment with Central Iowa Water Works. I do not have a solid cost yet, but their estimated cost for Polk City to join Central Iowa Water Works is just shy of 1.7 million. This is in next year's fiscal year budget. We have rounded this up to $2 million as we would be borrowing this money from the state revolving fund and then repaying this back with water utility money. Big Creek Schoolhouse improvements. We talked about this quite a bit at the council work session. Again, this was not in our CIP. I would suggest we amend the CIP. We will need to amend the CIP for Northeast Seventh Street, which we'll get to a little bit later this evening. But $100,000 budgeted for exterior improvements. We would use tax increment financing for this project, so we would need to amend the city's urban renewal plan. Again, this number could be reduced once the council prioritizes what exterior improvements need to be made to the building. And I wanted to be clear, this does not include the structural analysis that I was directed to get pricing from. But the next topic that we'll talk about is the structural condition analysis. They're called two different things in the proposal I received, or a structural condition analysis and a conditions assessment report. So this is not in the fiscal year 26 budget. If this is the council's priority, I would recommend that we do this this year, probably ASAP. I've received two proposals for a Phase One preliminary review analysis. Both proposals outline that based off of the report for Phase One, we may need to do a Phase Two. It all depends on what they find in Phase One. So I have two proposals. One is from Chuck Britson for $5,000. The other is from RDG for $6,750. I think the proposals are very different, and the firm's specialty is a little bit different. I do like to tend to take the lower bid when you can do that. I would propose that the council accept the RDG proposal. I thought that they did a little bit better job of focusing on historic preservation in their proposal, and I was just really pleased with RDG. RDG was also recommended by the Historical Society that we used them. I wanted to bring this to the council tonight. If you're okay with me getting started on getting this structural analysis done, this would be something that I could approve with my spending authority with the city, but I obviously want to get input from the council on this tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Did the Historical Society sit in on the presentation? Is that why they recommended one?
No, they did not. Well, a couple of different things. When you had your work session in early January to talk about the agreement, the Historical Society sent me a list of five firms in the state of Iowa that was recommended by the state Historical Society, and RDG was on that list. So they asked that we try to use one of those five firms. So I reached out to RDG. We have a resident in town that works for RDG. I just touched base with them, and they put me in touch with a historical architect. So I wanted to bring this before you tonight. It was my understanding in January that you all wanted to get started on this part of the project.
So in sort of in your discussions, what will the historical architect bring to the equation?
This is really going to be a structural analysis, so they are going to review the conditions of the building, of the entire building, and give us a report of all of the issues with the building. The report would also come with some recommendations. The recommendations could range from improvements that need to be made or recommendations to keep the historical intent of the building. RDG's proposal says that they would like to focus on helping the city to restore the building back to the period of significance, which was from 1863 to 1954. They just did a really nice job of researching the building and understanding the history of the building. So that is what you're going to get with the structural analysis. Please note, though, that both firms have shared with me that there could be two phases to this study, so we have to do the first phase before we can get to the second phase, and neither of them would give me proposals for the second phase because they don't know what they're getting into.
What does that mean? What will the second phase?
Depending on what they find with the structural report, there could be additional work that needs to be done. They refer to it as I don't want to mess this up. Forensics. So they may do some additional forensic work on the building if they can't find what they need to find with the initial report.
Sure what that means?
Yes, I know. So I did meet, when we met with RDG, we met onsite, and I did invite the Historical Society to come to that meeting just because they had a little bit more history of the building. And I found that they were very helpful having theirs a resource.
Sounds great. I am excited about this, too, if you want to, you know, schedule in a break and walk them over to the bandstand and have them do the same thing over there pro bono.
Okay. Are you good with me moving forward on this?
Council?
Yep, looks like.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, fiscal year 2026 budget. We talked about this last time. We budgeted $250,000 for annual street repair project. We do this annually. We identify streets throughout the community where we need to repair concrete panels. When the council did the CIP process last year, we had plugged a higher amount into the street repair project for fiscal year 2026. We talked about this at our budget work session. I've not put that in the budget. I have just put in the $250,000. This is still an opportunity for the council to prioritize a higher spending amount, but I would like to wait and see what new state legislation comes out regarding property tax reform before the city spend quite a bit of their road use tax money. Mike is working on a street inventory list for you. He is hoping to have that to you March. Is that what we're aiming for, a couple of weeks? So we should have that to you by March so that you could all see what would be on the priority list for street repairs. But for the fiscal year 26 budget proposed, this is what we have in next year's budget.
So I think that stemmed from the discussion we had, and looking forward to seeing that. I think that would be something that we could post publicly and get some interest and reaction to. Is that, I know we want to be careful about some of that stuff, but is that, do you see it going down that path where it's broadly for broader use or no?
Yes, I don't know why it couldn't, but once it's out there, I know we rank them, and I'm assuming that people, if it's in front of their house, would rank them differently.
Yeah.
That would probably be objective, of course.
Yeah.
That'd be, I guess, maybe the only problem we can see with that, but maybe there's a way to take that out of the equation, but it should be better for the public. That's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, and I guess not for them to weigh in on for the reasons you just said, right? My road's the only road I care about. I get that. But I do think having some long-term plan that we communicate, because that's essentially what this is, how we see now it'll change based on, you know, wear and tear and all that, but I don't know. I think people would be interested in that.
Okay, we'll get you the street priority list soon that you can see that. It will also include trails because we are to the point where we've noticed that we're going to need to start addressing trail maintenance and repairs in Polk City. So that list will include trails as well. Okay. Again, we talked about this at the work session. There are a few capital projects in next year's budget that were not in the CIP. Therefore, I would recommend that the first two that we amend our CIP to incorporate into. The first one is the regional park project, specifically Northeast Seventh Street. I mentioned this at the work session, but after the bond referendum failed in November, we had had some discussions with our bond council about constructing the street, not under general corporate purpose, but under essential corporate purpose, and a street would fall into that category. So we proposed to the council that if you'd like to do Northeast Seventh Street, you could do that at the council authority level without public approval. So we've included $2 million in bond proceeds into the budget for Northeast Seventh Street. Just wanted to make a note of this. If you look at Confluence's most recent estimate, their estimate for Northeast Seventh Street is 2.3 million. I asked Snyder and Associates to also draft up an estimate, and theirs is a little bit lower. The caveat is estimates are, you know, estimated cost, bidding and actual costs are what matter for this project. But I feel pretty comfortable on these two numbers collectively, that if we borrow $2 million, we can get this project done. So a reminder, if funds are borrowed in fiscal year 26, we would not have to make any debt payments until fiscal year 2027, so there's no levy impact for doing this project next year. I do feel pretty confident we can use tax increment financing for this project. I don't know how much could be funded through tax increment financing, but worst-case scenario, and this would also incorporate valuations not increasing for the fiscal year 27 budget, we'd be looking at a .36 per 100,000 increase to the debt service levy for this project. We've also included Phase Three of the Polk City Junction Trail with the roadway project. It would make a lot of sense to do those projects collectively as one project. The Phase Three project is in the current year budget as well, at an estimated cost of $320,000. Snyder and Associates thinks that if we were to combine those two projects together, it would save about $16,000 on the trail part. So the $2 million is specific to the roadway. I know we talked about borrowing additional money for fiscal year 26, but we did not incorporate that into the budget. What we talked about at the work session is if the municipal park committee goes through a process and they come up with a recommendation to borrow future funding, that the council could do a budget amendment. Are we good on that topic?
What's the timeline for the, are we waiting for the committee to do their work before we go ahead with the $2 million?
Not for the roadway. We'll talk about it with the committee. But yes, we're not waiting on them. It is a street project that we're obligated to do as part of our development agreement with NAP. But we do have a meeting this week with the municipal park committee, and we were going to share that information with them, that the council had prioritized putting this in next year's budget.
Okay, so I thought we said last time we do not have a commitment to NAP for
There's no timeline.
Okay.
So it's in our development agreement, but there's no deadline for the city. They have a deadline for them to construct Northeast Seventh, their portions, and that's June 30, 2026.
Okay, you're right. We're committed to doing it, just not when necessarily. So I still don't know about this. I'd like to get that committee's input. I'm not sure the best path forward after the failed bond vote is spending 20% on a road that doesn't get us any field space. I'd like to allocate some CIP funds to this so we're not also putting all our eggs in the borrowing money basket on to get anything forward, but I don't know. I'd like to get more input from that committee. So if we need to adjust the timeline, that would be my preference, but again, just a little leery to spend a still decent amount of money and not get the most important need out of the project out of it. I understand that an argument could be made that the road is necessary. I'm not sure that I'm there yet on that, so if we're going to spend that amount of money, and I'm not opposed to spending that amount of money, I'd rather actually have it be a benefit in the near term.
When you say allocate CIP funds, are you saying that you'd like to reprioritize projects that are being funded with cash for next year? The majority of our cash is local option sales tax, and $500,000 of that is the fire engine that we've already signed a contract for. So some other things, if you want to go down that path, it's mostly equipment. So it's fire engine, police vehicle, and then we are transferring quite a bit of lost money to the general fund for property tax reduction.
Understood. I know it's not going to be an easy discussion.
Okay.
But again, we prioritized the CIP predicated on the approval of a bond issue that did not approve, so I think we need to revisit it.
Okay.
But I'm only one person, so.
You know I want fields done, too, as quick as possible. Just looking at what we've got coming up for this FY 26, I'm not sure how much money we have on hand that we can actually throw towards putting in field space, towards seeding out there. And again, I want this done quickly. Even if we get seed out there, it's going to be a couple of years before it's playable, even for practice use. Right now, even if we do get those fields out there, there's no way for them, no way for our community to get to the site. We would still have an outlay of thousands of dollars to put in gravel just to get them to the site that doesn't have parking on it, doesn't have anything else.
I don't know that that's true. I mean, if it costs $2 million to build a road that is essentially the north-south width of the entire park, to me, there's got to be an option, and we've got fields on the northwest corner. Should be, and we want to spend, say we're using that dollar figure as the dollar figure to spend, developing some sort of pathway to get there, and parking lot still should leave some money for field space. And I get your point on it being a couple of years after we seed it, but that's also my argument as well. Right now, we have nothing in place.
I understand.
So we're not a year away. Every year we don't do this, we're kicking the can down the road, so.
I'm not sure it's the most cost-effective thing to build half the road, though, and then have to come back at a later point in time, and
I'm not saying build a road at all.
Okay. I don't know how we, again, get people to the sites other than having them park in the neighborhood.
Chelsea, what's the timetable on Vista Drive being put through that goes on the other side of the park? Is there any timetable on that being done?
Vista Lake Avenue would be the last thing that is extended as part of Big Creek Commons. That was like Phase Five or Six of Big Creek Commons.
And that is their expense, is that expense, correct?
Correct, yep.
So we don't have any timetable on when that is going to be put in?
No. NAP will prioritize plat two, three, four, and then five and six. I can't remember if it's five or six plats.
So this would get just the street all the way down to Madison, correct?
Yes.
And then the trail will be crossing over this street?
Correct.
Anyway?
Yes. So you'd have a road and a trail?
Andy?
Yeah, there's no good answer. But I the reason during the work session that I was leaning towards going forward is we've got to do it at some point. It doesn't get any cheaper. I think, back to your point, though, you're talking about how funds can be spent. I think there are limits and ways in which funds can be spent, and it sounds like a lot of the, like, available funds for the CIP have already been spent on things like fire, truck.
Correct, yep.
So to pull cash from somewhere, I think, is pretty limited. I think this is borrowing for a purpose that we're authorized to borrow. So I think we can't just swap it out for doing something in the field that's the same amount. I think this is still, it's a street, but it's a tangent to the project, and hopefully, you know, I mean, then that part's done, and we keep working on the other part, but yeah, there's no good answer, but I lean towards going for it.
It bears reminding, too, that we were all on board to borrow to build the entirety of the park, and yes, this is just one part of the park, but we were already on board to build this section, even though the bond didn't pass.
Well, I think we were on board to put forth a proposal that didn't pass, so I guess I'm not following your argument.
My argument is that I thought we were all in the same place where we wanted this park built, and we were all ready to borrow the money to build the park. This road was part of that package that we put up for bond.
That was rejected by the
That was rejected by the public, and in retrospect, I would have loved for this not to have been part of that bond package that we put up. But we were ready to borrow to build this as a council. I'm ready to borrow to build this as part of that project.
The full park. And I think the message that I'm interpreting received as part of the public not supporting, getting to the threshold that would have supported it, is that while it's still needed, we're not willing to pay for the full park. So that's why I think that we need to look at options, do a cost estimate on could we just in that northwest corner get to, and I'm making this up, soccer fields and 30 parking spots that are crushed rock or something, and get it usable within the next year or two, and then incrementally build on that, rather than building a road that, yes, in the full vision of the park, is ultimately needed at some point, but that spending $2 million and not gaining any functionality, to me, is not, again, what I heard people say. So I've not seen anything where we've looked at anything other than building this road, and I, if you break up the full plan, that's probably the next step. What I think that we need to do is scrap the full plan and block by block build pieces that folks can use, if that's whatever that is. And I think that's what the committee can share with us, because if we pulled together disparate voices, like it sounds like we have, should be able to do that. And it's just a different way of accomplishing the same thing. But again, I just, I mean, yes, $10 million was the full version. Spending 20% of that to get a road doesn't feel like we're gaining much, and we're spending a lot of money.
Does council have borrowing authority outside of the road?
Yes, but that is not in the budget.
Understand that, but what part? If they were to be interested in going down this path that Rob is discussing, do they have borrowing authority without having to go back to the public?
So under general corporate purpose, you could borrow $910,000 for a single project. So if you wanted to borrow money for the park, you could borrow that money one time for that project without voter approval. So they, we talked about this, they increased the threshold. It used to be 700,000 when we did the remodel for the fire station, and they increased it to 910,000. So the roadway falls under essential corporate purpose, and I think you all asked me to figure out a way to get something incorporated into the budget, so this would be my proposal, too, is you could do the roadway without voter approval. If the committee does their work in the next six months, five to six months, and comes back with a recommendation, you could do something in addition to the roadway. But the roadway is something that could be a council decision.
So Jeff, we haven't heard from you on the street.
I like where Rob's thoughts are going, but I think we need to understand if we piecemeal a road out like that, what does it cost in multiple phases versus what we're looking at now, just so we have an understanding. And I'm sure it's going to be more costly, but if we can only use 900-some thousand dollars of general corporate purpose once versus $2 million for essential corporate purpose for the roadway, I would lean toward the latter, but I still think we need to do our due diligence.
Okay. Are you all okay with me leaving this in the budget for now, knowing you have multiple opportunities to vote on this project in the future? There would be an engineering services agreement that would have to be approved, and then there would be a process where we do the bidding for the project. So can we leave this in the budget for now? And you have multiple opportunities to still talk about it.
I think that's the message you're getting from three council members.
Okay. Okay. I will see about breaking the project up into phases. I'm not sure how that, how we would do that, but I will ask that question. I will, I will see about breaking the project up into phases. I'm, I'm not sure how that, how we would do that, but I will ask that question. Okay. Moving on to the next item, this is the East Vista Lake Ave Trail. We talked about this at the work session. We have development agreements on file for both one fifteen East Vista and two twenty five East Vista, where we have a cost-sharing agreement where, where we are obligated to pay for a portion of the trail, and then the abutting property owner is responsible for a portion. The one fifteen East Vista, that is D Y O W A. It's a robotics company. You may all know that it was Bruce Boland's building before he sold it. They are responsible for eight thousand dollars of the trail cost. As you can see, our estimated cost for that project is just shy of twenty four thousand. So the city is going to be responsible for the, the, the remaining sixteen thousand dollars of the project. Why I put this in the budget is that's what, that's what that agreement says, and it gets more and more expensive every year to construct that trail, but we're not getting more money from the abutting property owner, so I would recommend that we get that one done. Two twenty four East Vista is responsible for fifty percent of the cost. This one's a little bit easier to prolong and delay, but it's really the one fifteen East Vista that is driving the need. I mentioned this is not in the CIP, so we would need to amend our CIP, and the proposal would also include using tax increment financing for this trail connection. So we would need to amend the city's urban renewal plan.
So can you just back up a slide?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. So does this orange piece include the, all of the projects that we were just talking about?
Correct.
The entire area? Okay.
Yep. And you can, you can see that the Lakes Early Learning Center is the property with the large parking lot north of East Vista. Titan Storage would go to the east of the daycare. They would be responsible for their trail and sidewalk connection all the way around their property, so we'd have no cost on that property.
That's this one?
So this is in next year, this is in the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget as well. We've already talked about the cost. We've budgeted fifty thousand dollars, which I do think is very high for this trail connection, but both agreements outline a special assessment option. Special assessments typically increase the cost of the project. So I, we've budgeted a little bit high here. We spent some time at the work session talking about new accounting software. I'm not gonna spend too much time talking about this again, but our current software is making a change, and we think that this would be a good time for us to shop software. As you can see, there could actually be a cost savings over a ten-year period if we make this switch. New equipment in the fiscal year twenty six budget. We have a police vehicle, eighty nine thousand dollars. We have the fire engine that we ordered three years ago. It's been a while. October twenty twenty two, so two and a half years ago. We will get that in fiscal year twenty six. We also budgeted for a new dump truck for two hundred and twenty seven thousand. The dump truck will be paid with road use tax, water sewer funds, and then the outdoor warning siren. We have purchased a siren for the Antler Ridge subdivision, but we need to install that siren. We estimate the installation cost would be about twenty five thousand dollars for that siren. And just a reminder, we did have a Public Works pickup truck for sixty five thousand in the CIP that did not make it into the budget. We are trying to figure out when we could move that pickup truck to.
So I just have a quick question. Of, of those first three items, the police vehicle, the fire engine, and the Public Works dump truck, do we have old vehicles that we're going to sell on that government site, or are these being added?
We, we do have old vehicles we're going to sell, and we would use those proceeds to purchase the new equipment. Yeah, so the new equipment will replace old equipment. Okay. I want to be very clear, neither of these projects are in the budget, but I wanted to take some time to talk about this. Allure at Sailerville, the project you all reviewed rezoning for back in the fall of twenty four, will have to complete a traffic impact study. That intersection needs to be studied further than what would be triggered just from that development. So Polk City, the city of Ankeny, the DOT, and Polk County met in November of twenty twenty four to talk about a larger-scale traffic impact study and possible concept for what would go with that intersection. Preliminary concept would probably be that you'd need some sort of traffic improvement roundabout or traffic signal at that intersection. But you do the study first to generate what actually goes at the intersection for construction. Snyder and Associates has prepared a estimate for us, which would range between ninety eight thousand and a hundred and sixteen thousand. That would be shared. I don't know how equally, equal it would be shared amongst the four government entities. Allure at Sailerville would be responsible for twenty five thousand dollars of that cost. Depending on that project, this conversation might be coming up in the next couple of months with the council, but wanted to get this in front of you. We are trying to schedule a follow-up meeting with those three other government entities in March, and we would have some better idea of how we could cost-share those study costs. When we went through the public hearing regarding the rezoning, traffic was a very large concern of the residents out there. So my recommendation would be that we seriously look into a larger-scale traffic impact study at the intersection.
So just a quick question. Do we have a commitment already from the DOT, the county, and Ankeny to cost-share with us on this amount? Have they committed to doing it?
When we met in November, we did not have an estimate. We just talked that we needed to have something drafted up. So I received the estimate, and now I'm coordinating a follow-up meeting with those entities. Yeah, it'll, it, it will be interesting because this might not be priority for all of the entities, so we will need to get into the nitty-gritty of cost-sharing. Highway four fifteen Bridge Road. You have brought this to my attention before. It's not something that we've put in the CIP, but we do have some traffic congestion on Bridge Road. We met with the DOT prior to our joint meeting, and we did talk about if they would be interested in doing a traffic impact study to understand the limitations of Bridge Road from the four-way at Bridge Road and Third Street to the sports complex. I have an estimated cost of a hundred thousand dollars. It's give or take around that number. When we met with the DOT back in the fall of twenty twenty four, they indicated they would be willing to do some cost-sharing on something like this, but I'd like to have a follow-up meeting with the DOT to see what that interest would be. Also, we've never talked about this project. I don't know if this is even a council priority, but I do know you've asked me to look into this before.
The traffic study work that was done for both the stoplight at Parker and Bridge and Bridge and Third. How apples to oranges is this study compared to those? It seems like we do studies very frequently for a specific purpose, and then they get thrown away. In a couple of years, we do another one when we think there's another upgrade, and I'm just concerned by, the study's only as good as our willingness to follow through on what the study then says. So it's a commitment to spend considerably more, and I don't know, three traffic studies given everything else that could be prioritized is a little bit problematic for me.
So when you do a traffic study at an intersection, they just evaluate turn movements for that intersection? This would be a corridor similar to the North Street corridor, where they actually look at turn movements and activity on an entire street. So it's not just one intersection focused. It's multiple intersections, intersections and roadway traffic. So you did do, you did do a traffic impact study for Third and Bridge, and you put a traffic signal there, right, as part of that study? Quick Star did the traffic impact study at Parker and Bridge, and then Quick Star installed the traffic signal. And then you did, you did do a traffic impact study for Broadway and Third, which you have prioritized a traffic signal in future years for. I don't know what other studies have been done in the last five-year period. Have we done other ones, though?
Did we do, did the development south of, of the regional park on North Side Drive or, what's the?
North Side Drive?
Or not.
Madison, not Madison.
No, the, the main road that goes over to Ankeny now. Hundred eighteen, geez.
Which is North Side Drive.
Yeah, that's. Prior Fire Department analogy is clearly wearing off. Did we do one there when they, when those developments went in?
The developers did, so they were responsible for that cost, yes.
Yeah, so I, again, it, it's less about the spend for the study and, and who's paying for that than it is. It does seem like the knowledge falls off, you know, even if it's the same area, we've got a different purpose, so it's not translatable, so. My only concern is, again, spending well into six figures on these studies is nothing more than a commitment on how to actually upgrade things, and that has a shelf life, so.
I think my question, especially with the four fifteen Bridge Road one, is if we go ahead with this particular study, how soon is state DOT gonna be ready to do anything on Bridge Road? Follow on to Rob's question. We can do this. We can throw the money at it, but if they're not gonna be ready to do anything on it for another five years, ten years.
Right.
When are we gonna have the money to do this kind of thing, if we have to kick in cost-sharing on that? So I, I want to sit tight on that one until we know what they're ready and what they're going to prioritize.
Okay.
I would say I think the two traffic lights that, that council approved on Parker and Bridge and then also on Third and Bridge, I think they've made a big difference in traffic there, at least slowing traffic down on Bridge Road. So if, maybe the council would want to prioritize these.
Well, yeah, I think, so we've got Third already in, right?
Correct, yep.
And I think the four fifteen and forty fourth, I think that's, especially with the allure, but even without the allure, that's becoming a high-traffic area and a priority, but I think you raised a good point, Rob. If we're not ready to do something with four fifteen and Bridge Road, stuff gets outdated. I know the lot there by Quick Star may get something on that that, that could impact things, so I would be more inclined to sit tight on the four fifteen and Bridge for a little bit, prioritize Third Street as it is in there already, and then the four fifteen and forty fourth, I think, would be important.
Okay. I could, I can try to have a conversation with the TOT on when they might want to make improvements to Bridge Road, and then we can better plan on our part of if we want to participate in those projects, and if it aligns with our timetable. Okay. I will, I just want to make sure I'm information sharing on this. I will follow up with you after that meeting happens in March with the other entities on what they are willing to do or not willing to do. Okay. That is all I have, unless you have questions, anything budget-related.
You have one minute. I think we're good. So I'll ask a motion to adjourn then. All in favor, say aye. Anybody saying sign?